The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council meeting of March 26, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr, Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir, Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Baschertash.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I'll call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify as specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive, and I've declared the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in the expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received one speaker card for items not listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Would you call that speaker, please?
The first speaker is Eddie Lane.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Eddie Lane with the Sierra Club. I'm here to give a commercial today. We have the pleasure to announce that tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock, we're having a dialogue about trees with the city of Fresno. They have a very comprehensive urban forest management plan that we've talked about before, and we have one of their top officials going to be talking to us on a Zoom call about 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. So I wanted to give you a personal invitation. We'll be talking about issues such as their very comprehensive how they develop their plan, heat island effect, their policy, their practice of planting 1,000 trees a year. That's a pretty good goal in Fresno, and other aspects of what they're doing up there. It's always good to learn from other communities. So we'll be doing that tomorrow afternoon. Everybody's invited. We'll do some little summary notes and send them around at some point. Also, I want to express my appreciation to the Parks Recreation Director, who will be a part of that discussion tomorrow afternoon. So it's important that city staff are engaged. Also, we're passing out again a copy of the November 6 letter that was sent by the Cal State, signed by 125 people. And in those recommendations were discussions about City Fresno. So we're doing some follow-up with that. Also, next month, we will be having a Zoom session having to do with Louisville and the trees that were planted there. And it's the effect, it's the healthy living effect that trees can provide for people. So I'll keep you posted. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you for sharing. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers in this category?
Mayor Go, no, we do not.
Thank you. And do we have any speakers for items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports, Item 3A, Administrative Citations Process Update and Automation Proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a topic that has been raised in a committee, and there was interest in another committee, but at the wisdom of our city attorney, we felt it was more appropriate to bring forward to the full council and workshop to discuss some possibilities related to an administrative citation process. And we'll turn the time over to our Park Ranger manager, Billy Owens.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir, Billy Owens. I'm your Park Ranger manager for the city of Bakersfield. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'll be sharing, and city staff, I'll be sharing a short PowerPoint presentation with you. Following the PowerPoint, I'll be available for any questions. Additionally, I've invited representatives from each of the departments who are here to answer any in-depth questions you may have regarding the program. So why are the citations an important tool? It comes down to it in the context of managing the natural resources and protecting the city of Bakersfield assets. The current departments that wish to utilize an improved administrative citation program over what we currently have is the Recreation and Parks, Park Ranger Division, Development Services, Code Enforcement, Public Works, the Solid Waste Division, the Bakersfield Fire Department, and the Bakersfield Police Department. Some of the advantages is the swift and efficient enforcement of the violations that occur. The staff has the ability to take immediate action. The primary goal is to educate the public and encourage compliance to the rules or regulations. And we hope that it can deter future violations by educating them. Minor offenses are able to be helped without requiring a court appearance or court involvement. And staff has the discretion that allows them a tailored response to the individual situation at hand. The administrative citation is more of a community-based approach than a criminal citation. You're able to address minor violations, and it provides staff an opportunity to educate the violator and hopefully lead to a behavior change. The administrative citation program's more cost-effective. It's less expensive to produce than a full arrest requiring court appearances, staff appearances at court, even though they could appear at administrative hearings. And it does not require a police officer to issue the citation. The primary goal is preservation of city property and resources, and long-term sustainability of the city assets. And of course, we hope to deter future violations. You know, the primary goal is to address the underlying issue that created the violation to begin with. Some of the advantages to the third-party processor is the data entry portion, assuring that the information is correct, the codes are correct, dates, locations, et cetera, that's entered into the database, potentially including the data from various forms of citations. This program can be operated from a smartphone as well as other electronic devices. The payment processing, the service provider sets up online payment portals for the convenience of the citizens. They accept various forms of payments, credit cards, debit cards, et cetera, and they handle all the payment processing and reconciliation. They also have a customer service center, which they filled all the calls and questions from the individuals that were issued the citation regarding payments, the options of the payment and contesting, and they provide support via phone and email. The reporting and analytics portion of it, we're able to generate reports on citations and trends and rates of compliance. It also provides some data-driven insights for process improvement. And I look at that as, is there things that we can do to help educate the public in advance of the initial contact and then later citations? The service provider also prints and mails the citations, sends reminders, and they handle the adjudication through the online appeals website, and ultimately an administrative hearing held by an independent hearing officer if the case goes that way. They also utilize various collection methods to collect the revenue that's due to the city. City staff and management has oversight throughout the entire process of the citations, collections, appeals, and review for any hardship waivers that may be requested. This is just a snapshot of some of the violations that it would apply to consistently through here. Any of the parking violations would be consistent with the Bakersfield PD fine structure, which they currently use, and that would be for any departments that utilize that. For the park rangers, it would be primarily for enforcing the park rules. For Development Services and Code Enforcement, it would be the encroachment violations, parking, illegal dumping, zoning violations, vacant unregistered structures. Solid Waste would be the mandated organic recycling of the Senate Bill 1383, which has its own set of prescribed violations for that. The Bakersfield Fire Department arson unit for illegal fireworks, parking enforcement. And the Bakersfield Police Department is the animal control, loud and unruly vandalism as well. And keep in mind, these are not exclusive to other sections that could be applied to. There's a lot of data on this sheet. I'm not going to go through each one, but if you think of column number one, that would be if they were issued a citation and they paid that citation. Column number two is if they ignore it, the process that it would follow. Column number three is if they would file an appeal. That would be the process through Data Ticket. And then column number four would be how that citation is adjudicated, whether it was held up through the administrative appeal or they move forward to a superior court action. The next steps, what we're looking for is direction from council to move forward with the staff recommendations to use the third-party processor. We would bring back any modifications to the municipal code needed to address fine structures. And then each department would take changes in those schedules or fine structures back to committee and then back to council for approval. And then ultimately, a contract with the service provider, which currently the city has in place with the police department. Datatic currently processes the parking citations for the police department. And that concludes that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg, do you have any closing comments before we go to council?
Just reflect again. This is a fairly common practice in other municipalities where they contract out for the administration of their citation processing. It's something that becomes less of a burden for our local staff, and these other companies have some economies of scale. We do feel like this is an efficiency measure that helps our staff stay focused on the actual enforcement and doesn't have a negative revenue impact. I would note, we feel strongly that we do need to keep a very close eye on this, especially as that would be something new, to make sure that the appeals process and some of the other steps in the process are reflective of our values. But we again think that's a very strong efficiency measure.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. And Madam City Clerk, just confirming that we don't have any requests from the public for this item?
Mayor Go, we do not.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on the, if they ignore the fee down at the bottom, it says no payment received, fines submitted to franchise tax board for collection. What happens then?
That is one of the avenues that they do. The Datatic does have the ability to attach that fine to your state income tax as one of their methods of collection.
So it'd just be added to your tax? The franchise tax board would take it out of your tax?
Correct. That is one of the methods, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Coleman?
Sorry, Mayor, I think we have a potential clarification. Mr. Burns, you want to speak to the clarification on whether it's a refund versus a regular payment?
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. My understanding is if there was a refund, they would deduct that refund to collect that fund. It would not additional tax when we had talked to Datatix in the past.
Correct. Maybe I'm misunderstood what you were asking.
So if there's no refund, then we wouldn't collect that money until there was a refund?
Correct.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. So it sounds like a great tool. Are we asking questions or are we commenting?
Whatever you choose to do at this point.
Well, thank you very much.
We have already passed the public comment part, so.
All right, here we go. So yeah, it sounds like a great tool, you know, to help streamline things. But, you know, I'm a little worried about the consequence to the residents. And the, you know, we talk here about exercising restraint in enforcement. And I'm just a little worried that, you know, we're going to have 50 other people running around writing citations for things. And I'd like to see some policy from, you know, the city manager to staff about exercising that restraint. And one of my concerns is that the number of citations somebody writes should not be a part of the performance evaluation. I'd like to see some kind of rule about that or policy about it.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Coleman, could you say a little bit more about the second piece? The first piece, I understand well, you know, giving direction to staff about using good wisdom and discretion. Say more about the performance evaluation?
Well, I know that in the old days in law enforcement, they used to evaluate police officers based on, you know, felony arrests, misdemeanor arrests. And what that did is it encouraged officers to, you know, charge people felonies when maybe they weren't. And then that policy went away a long time ago in law enforcement. But it's kind of human nature. You get what you count. And so I would not like to see how many citations a person writes being part of their performance evaluation.
Understood. Thank you.
That is, I am a little concerned about the impact on the residents. If there's a warning process or whatever. I mean, you know, parking and that kind of stuff, you know, we get that, you know. But, you know, if you're, you know, doing something in the park that is a violation of an ordinance or something, I'd like to know that the people that are out there are advising the residents about what the ordinance is and giving them an opportunity to remedy before we're writing citations.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I think that's good feedback and consistent with the conversations that we've had. But I would invite Mr. Owens to just describe a little bit about how the park rangers are trained to approach those kind of situations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. As part of our policy that we will develop for this, you know, we maintain an education-first approach. So there's not going to be any park rangers, or I can't speak for the other departments, but I wouldn't think so. That would be out there in a citation-first approach. So this would be another tool that if an education component, educating the people on the rules of the parks or whatever is at hand, if that didn't work, then that's where the citation program would come into play. And as part of that policy, as it's developed, we would include in that as, you know, the warning first. And then initially on the rollout, I know from my department, that ability would only be given to supervisors initially on the rollout until we do our troubleshooting, our problem-solving in the process. So that way, we have a very tight control over that in the initial rollout.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I like the idea of having a consistent system, that everybody's doing the same thing. So for that, the reason I like it. But I have no more comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Owens. I just want to clarify and provide some additional context. So we're, this council is not being asked to consider any type of ordinance change as it relates to the types of violations that are cited. And that's not our question here. We do that through various different other processes. Really, this is a consideration of whether or not we're going to adopt this new process, right? And so I want to dig in a little deeper with the administrative citation process currently. What is the process currently? I know it's paper-based, but just kind of give us a sense of what that process looks like.
Correct. Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. So the current process, if I were to issue an administrative citation, I have that ability today, but it's limited to $1,000 administrative citation. So there's no leadway on that other than the wastewater department. They have a different fee structure adopted. So I would issue that citation today, then I would contact the city attorney's office to schedule an administrative hearing for a minimum of 30 days in the future, I believe is the minimum. And then that hearing would be scheduled in case that individual wanted to appeal that citation. For them to appeal that citation, they pay the fine amount upfront, so that individual would pay that $1,000, then file their appeal to get it to the hearing. And then based on that hearing, is where it would go after that. One of the downfalls in our current system is the collectability and the administration of that collectability, because it's all done on an Excel spreadsheet by city staff. So that's kind of the, did that answer your question?
It does. So then what changes for us at City Hall with this new automated approach?
So in changes to City Hall, I understand you're asking what we would be bringing back to you for a decision on?
My question just is in terms of the process and how we improve the process, because, you know, the paper-based system is a question of efficiency. But then as I read the administrative report, it looks like there's also a strain in resources when it comes to that appeals process. And so my question is, are there, you know, maybe I should just get to the heart of it, are there those violations that currently go unsited as a result of the current process?
I think there's a lot of them, Councilmember, and I will use fireworks as, I don't want to put arson on the spot here, or fire, but that's probably one of the most common, that lack of enforcement due to the in-depth of the process and the lack of results, if that makes sense. The difference in going with a process server or a citation manager, think of it as a management company. So we're going to write the citation, we're going to scan it to them, and they're going to manage that process from then on. So staff is not managing that. And there's two options on administrative hearings. That can be contracted through Data Ticket, or it could be an internal hearing officer. I believe the PD utilizes an internal hearing officer for their admin appeals. And this current process is in play right now at the police department. I've talked, we've had meetings with the assistant chiefs and the lieutenant over the traffic division. They've utilized Data Ticket for an extended period and have relatively no complaints or issues out of them. So they currently manage the parking citation program for the police department.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gonzalez, maybe a little bit more background from the city attorney's perspective? With regard to the fireworks, that's a very complex situation as the council is aware of. I mean, first of all, there is enforcement with the fireworks. We all know that. The issue is, remember, a law enforcement officer has to witness an infraction or a misdemeanor in their presence in order to issue, whether it's a ticket or it's an administrative citation. They have to see it. So oftentimes, on the 4th of July and with the fireworks, it gets very difficult because it's dark out, and we can't see the people that are using legal versus illegal fireworks. Originally, when we had the administrative citation process, and we still do, for, again, specifically the fire department with illegal fireworks, it was a tremendous success, tremendous success. But it was pretty then well-known that when a homeowner had to pay the $1,000, and by the way, by law, that is the most that you can charge on an administrative citation, period, end of discussion. It cannot go any higher than that. So we started charging $1,000, gave the homeowner the citation. The homeowner soon figured out that a majority of the citations, when they went to the hearing officer, which by the way, the city pays for the hearing officer, so we have an independent person that's actually hearing the citation, the homeowners quickly figured out that they weren't winning, they weren't prevailing. And so what would happen, they were out $1,000, we were collecting the $1,000. So the next year and the year after, we saw the number of fines actually decrease, not because of lack of enforcement from the fire department, but because homeowners soon said, I'm not going to pay the $1,000 for the appeal, and you're not going to come after me. And you know what? We didn't come after them. Why? Because I didn't have a judgment. All I had was a paper product that said Ginny Gennaro owes $1,000 because she lit off an illegal firework. I then had to take that as the city attorney. I had to go to the Treasury Department. I had to go to small claims court. I had to convert that citation into a judgment. So now I have a judgment against the homeowner. The judgment still isn't going to be paid because it's $1,000. I don't have the ability to go to the franchise tax board. I was unaware that Datatix was able to do that. I am a bit surprised that they're going to be able to do that on all administrative fines. But at the end of the day, it was too expensive, cost prohibitive for staff to then take that judgment. We would record it at the Hall of Records, and it stays on someone's record for 10 years. A judgment is good for 10 years. Sometimes we would turn it over to H.P. Sears, and usually on your agenda, every now and then, every quarter, you'll see where finance gives you on your consent calendar, where you write off judgments. And you were writing off a lot of those judgments because it was cost prohibitive to go after and collect them. So I would tell you that while I think Datatix is a wonderful tool, and maybe it has worked very well for the police department, I would encourage the council to insist that metrics be taken and come back, because you're going to want to find out, who are these, we're paying the hearing officer. Someone's got to pay the hearing officer. I'm already paying Datatix. So let's get ready for the argument, right, that the Datatix hearing officer is not a neutral party, because I'm paying Datatix, and Datatix has skin in the game every time I give them a ticket. So the real issue is, how is it getting paid? And it's not, again, for fireworks, it wasn't lack of enforcement, it was the process as a whole. And I'm not convinced that, again, that the fire department is switching to Datatix this time. That may be something that this council wants to consider as part of a referral to a committee. That wasn't my understanding.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I think we're headed down similar lines of thinking here. Let me ask another question then. Regarding this slide that indicates that there are various different departments that are involved with administrative citations and violations, that led me to believe that all of these departments were in fact participating in Datatix. Or, and in fact, the first slide actually calls out fire department, police department, solid waste, code enforcement, park ranger. So is this a tool then that all departments will be adopting? Are we going to, and then I heard that BPD has still a hearing officer for their administrative hearing. So are there multiple processes here? Or help me understand what we're doing.
So yes, there is a desire by the listed departments, and arson is here. I've seen Bryce there. If you want in-depth conversation or questions with Bryce. But the departments there, we've met with all of those departments who could benefit from an improved process. And so, yeah, that's, I forget, what was your other portion of your question?
The question was with regard to a comment that you made earlier regarding BPD and the administrative hearings that they conduct. And my question is, you know, I understand that they have already adopted this system.
Yes, for the parking citations, yes.
For parking citations. So are we following the same administrative hearing process for all departments?
It would be the same, because it's by the same service provider, by Datatickets. Does that, that make sense? So yeah, it would be the same process.
Okay.
And BPD does use a contract service provider, just like Datatic has contract service providers or hearing officers.
Okay, I understand. I'm with you. All right. Then I will make the motion to approve and authorize the automation of the administrative citation process. I'm sure other colleagues have comments, but I'll make that motion. And I will make a referral also that we send this back to committee for the development of those metrics of how we are measuring the progress. I think that will also help us speak to Councilmember Coleman's concerns that we're well put as well. Thank you.
Councilmember, do you have any other comments? Councilmember, do you have any other comments? I see, I don't see any other requests. Seeing none, you have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Core, and Councilmember, we're absent.
Thank you. And now, Madam City, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Closed session, Item 4A, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Regarding Jonathan Wharton v. City of Bakersfield et al.
Thank you. We adjourn to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 City Council Meeting at 4:30. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We only had one item on closed session this afternoon, and by a 5-0 vote, with Councilmembers Weir and Core absent, the city attorney was given direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 4:30.